Pleasant Ridge City Commission Meeting to Order. Could we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here. All right, we'll go on to public discussion for any items that are not on the agenda.
Oh, I'll take one.
All right, Happy New Year, everyone, by the way.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
George Lenko, 32 Oakland Park. Thank you for bringing to our attention through social media that eastbound 696 is going to be closed. And some of the scatter comments on social media was, this is going to be a problem. I'm thinking through it, and I think it's going to be good for us this summer with cars not exiting eastbound, tearing through Woodward with their loud cars and all that. So I just wanted to revisit the loud car issue. I'm sure there's other things on Chief Reed's agenda for the loud car issue, but so far, it's, it sounds like good news on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items for public discussion? I guess, oh, please. Oh, yes, please.
Sure, I'm Nat Pernick, and this is the fourth election that I've sponsored a voter challenge among the eight communities in our next-door community. And I'm pleased that Pleasant Ridge won second place this year with an 83.9% turnout. And so we ask each community that wins to designate a charity. And you designated Fern Care, so I have a check for somebody for $500 for Fern Care.
And Fern Care is here, too.
Fern Care is here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If it's possible, if somebody can take a picture, just post this in next door.
Sure. I'll step down and grab a picture with you.
Yeah. Thank you for doing this.
I just wouldn't, just don't show the check on there. I don't want somebody to have to take it.
No, absolutely not.
You can hold it, hold it back there.
Come up here, you guys.
Sure.
So that that thing's in the back. Thanks for doing this, though. That's a very cool, even though your city beats us every time. We try really hard.
Oh, sure. Yeah, so my, my father was Larry Pernick of blessed memory. He was an Oakland County Commissioner from 68 and, to his death, actually 97. So he instilled in me the value of public service and local government. And so I'm pleased to be able to help local government this way.
Well, that's a great way to do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Quick question. What's the, the grand prize?
A thousand.
Oh, all right. So something to upper game.
Thanks. So my name is Dan Martin. I'm the Executive Director of Fern Care. And I just wanted to say thank you so much. If you're not familiar with it or for the folks at home, Fern Care is an organization that provides free healthcare to people without insurance over the age of 19. So this money goes directly to help folks who are the most vulnerable of our population, including residents of Pleasant Ridge. So we're very grateful for this and the opportunity to, you know, talk about Fern Care a bit. I'll leave some literature in the back if anybody's interested. And my number's on there. They're welcome to give us a call, okay? Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I think we'll move on to liaison reports. Commissioner Schmier.
Thank you, Mayor. Historical Commission, just a few things. The museum will be open January 18th, which is this coming Saturday? Is that this coming Saturday? Geez, I know. 10 until noon. So it's our, it's the historical museum's normal business hours, third Saturday of every month. Hundred-year tiles. If you have ordered and paid for a hundred-year tiles, they are now here. An email went out. I think a follow-up email went out or should be going out. But if you've already ordered, please come pick them up. You can pick them up at City Hall. You can reach out to Historical. If your house is already 100 years old, you can come by to City Hall or the Historical Museum anytime that's open, anytime, and buy a hundred-year tile. And for the 2025 hundred-year houses, so I guess that would be 1925 houses, a letter is going out in the next couple of weeks. Once you get that letter, feel free at that point to come in and buy your hundred-year tiles. Last thing is that the Historical Commission is going to have three openings starting in March. So if you are interested, please fill out an application. You can find that here at City Hall or on the website. And if you're interested in checking out a meeting, we meet the first Wednesday of the month. So that would be February, oh, I don't have my calendar, but the first Wednesday in February. What is that? Fifth, thank you. So if you are interested in learning more and want to come watch a meeting, please feel free to come, February 5th, the Community Center, or please complete an application. And that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Commissioner Budnick.
Thank you, Mayor. 2025 magnets and winter ridgers were in the mailboxes last week. So be sure to stick that calendar to the fridge for all your important city dates. I know ours kind of moves around from place to place. The kids get to kind of pick where it goes. This one's exciting. Learn to Paint Like Bob Ross.
I am so excited. I've already signed up.
Yeah, me too.
I had a feeling this was gonna.
Oh, yeah, so excited.
Some participation.
It's almost sold out.
Well, the first one is, the February one is, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm so excited.
So.
You have to work on, on the hair.
I'll grow, I'll grow it out. So make a new masterpiece each month with this Hands-on Class. And these are going to be held on Tuesdays. Commissioner Schmier mentioned 2-4. That one's sold out, it sounds like. 3-4, 4-8, and 5-6. So that's 1, 2, 3, 4 in a row. And this is from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. $60 is the fee per workshop. And of course, no experience is necessary. It sounds like fun and.
And everything's included.
Will there be Bob Ross audible, like vocals being played in the background? Maybe just in a couple of episodes?
Just practice your pretty trees.
That's awesome. Next up is community storytelling, and this is held on February the 6th at 11:00 a.m. This is the first Thursday of each month prior to the movie. So this is, sharing stories is kind of a great way to build community, foster learning and understanding, as well as create a sense of relationship. Moreover, you can learn American Sign Language. That's Wednesdays from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. And this is a free event. There is no formal instructor, so come learn to practice new skills. And I'm sure Ted Zachary would be pleased with both of those. Oscar movie series will begin soon, so watch for movie titles and showtimes to be released soon. I can't believe this. Summer employment applications are now being accepted for headguards, lifeguards, and camp counselors. So camp, the pool, it's always a big draw and super fun that we're talking mid-January and we're talking about the heat. So it's great. So go to the cityofpleasantridge.org under the Rec tab. And the deadline to apply is March 31st at 3:00. And the 2025 summer swim team registration has already begun. The deadline to register for the team is March 31st as well. If you have specific questions about the team, give the Rec Department a ring. And last up, couple of meetings. The Teen Council will meet on Wednesday, January 29th. That is right before the Rec Commission meets, and that's at the Community Center. They'll be meeting at 6:00. Then the Rec Commission will meet right after at 7:00 p.m. And once again, that's January 29th. I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I think we'll move on to Commissioner Perry and the Arts Council.
Thank you. The Arts Council met in December, and we had a very productive meeting talking about what, you know, what is next. We are coming in very close with the whole framework plan for the arts plan for the city, which we're all very excited about. We also decided that last year's Super Fun Art Party was such a success, bringing people together, seeing all the talent in the city. So many talented people, is we want to try and do it again. And so we are looking at March 21st is the date for the Super Fun Art Party. Stay tuned for more details. Well, they'll be coming soon. And then also, our next meeting should be February 19th. It's the third Wednesday of the month, and it'll be right here at City Hall at 4:30. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next up will be the Ferndale School District. We have Jackie Wright.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm Jackie Hart. I am also a Pleasant Ridge resident, but I'm also a member of the school board. I just want to give you a few updates on what's happening in the district. We have a new appointee. We have four open, four new board members. One appointee, who happens to be a Pleasant Ridge resident, Mark DeLaverne, who many of you may know. He is on the Planning Commission for Pleasant Ridge. He is going to fill the opening from a board member who resigned. And there's a two-year, two years left on that term. So Mark will be with me as the representative for the school district to Pleasant Ridge. We have three other Ferndale residents who filled open seats. David Crumryne, Lisa Kaiser, and Erin Mulner. Next, I'd like to just give you an update on our strategic planning process. We have a five-year plan that expired at the end of 2024. So we're in the process now of working with the Committee of Stakeholders to take the survey feedback that we received and work on crafting a plan for the goals for the next five years for the district. Next, I'd like to update you on Ferndale Middle School Robotics Team. I am very pleased to announce that. Last month, they won the state championship at an event at Macomb Community College. So now they are on their way to the world championship in Houston. So the team is doing fundraisers right now so that they can pay for the cost to travel to Houston in April. They did a couple of bottle and can drives, but they do have a GoFundMe going right now. And you can go on to the Ferndale Schools website, ferndalschools.org. Right on the homepage, you click a link, and then it'll take you to a page where there's a QR code and a link where you can donate to the team to travel to Houston. And then lastly, I just wanted you to stay tuned because at the end of February, we will have our annual State of the District event, where the superintendent and her team will update the community on what's happening in the district and what we have planned for the remaining of the school year and the next five years to come as we work on our strategic plan. And that's it for tonight.
That's awesome. I also heard from Felicia Wright that the bond is moving forward.
Yes, yes.
It's going to its next phase.
Yes, yes. So we applied to be in the May ballot to get a no-millage bond for the school district so that we can continue to do some facility upgrades. Hopefully, at the secondary level, we've got an amazing lower elementary building. So now we want to, you know, enhance what we have at the secondary campus.
Awesome.
So stay tuned.
That's a good 2025.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And then Commissioner Lenko.
Yes, thanks, Mayor.
I'm planning.
Yes. So I'm sure everybody got one of these in the mail many, many, many months ago. So as we're walking down the timeline, we are in the near, close to reviewing the, the master plan. So before the 65-day official window. PleasantRidgePlans.com is the website. You can find all these documents out there. And the next Planning Commission DDA meeting is in this chamber, February 10th at 7:00 p.m. So we anticipate at that meeting, then we'll advance it to the formal review where we would review it as a city commission. So no meeting of the Planning Commission DDA since the last time we've met, but we'll have more updates after in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, governmental reports. Who shall start?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody. It's so great to see everybody. So my Happy New Year is our new ambulance that we ordered with ARPA funds is finally coming here. So January 22nd, we will travel to the plant, do final inspection, take delivery, and drive it back. So it will go in service in February. We're getting everything lined up to get all the equipment loaded up. So you'll see the new ambulance, the new engine, you know, came that is in service. So we'll have both of those, and both those are ARPA fund purchases. So that's a great benefit to our communities that we were able to do with that money without impacting, you know, general funds and stuff, put to service. So it's really exciting. Staffing, I have one firefighter that thought they wanted to leave to go work somewhere else and quickly realized that, no, they want to be back. And Ferndale's an amazing fire department. And called me, says, chief, I want to come back home. So we rehired that. So our staffing is looking good, and we're looking great for our 2025. So I'm really excited to keep engaging. If you have kids in the high schools in Ferndale, our fire department will be participating in the job fair that they're going to be hosting there, Queer Fair, and to try to engage. And we're going to be stepping up a lot of our programs in the schools where they'll see us at all levels. We did partner with Oak Park to do fire safety in the elementary schools because it was very important to me that even though our schools are technically in Oak Park now, for us to still stay in contact with our community and our kids. So we built that partnership with them. So you, your kids may have still seen us, and that's just going to keep growing in what we do to be in the elementary schools, middle school, and high school going forward. So it's exciting.
Cool. I would love a ride in the ambulance just because I'm a.
Just for fun.
Just for fun.
Only with the lights on.
I would prefer the fire truck than the ambulance, right?
Right. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Just a few things. The first one, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we're going to be giving out some warnings about people not clearing off their sidewalks. Got some complaints about that. So if your sidewalks aren't clear, please get those done. Officers will be coming around the next day or two. I think they already started, but giving some friendly reminders on that. Needs to be done. Keep the neighbors from slipping and falling, from your first responders from slipping and falling. Second thing, wanted to touch a little bit on, we know that AI is advancing very, very quickly, but it has hit with the scams, and it continues to hit with the scams, and it is moving very quickly in that end, too. They have now integrated filters into FaceTime. So no, you're not talking to Brad Pitt. You're not talking to.
No.
You know, whoever. Liam Neeson doesn't need $40,000 to, you know, fill up his helicopter, that type of thing. So we just want you to be aware. If it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. But it's also getting very scary that you almost can't tell the difference. If something's going on, we usually don't find out about it until a lot of money has already been drained from the account. So check on your family. If they say that they're talking to someone online, see what's going on. Check that out. Because it is scary. And we've seen a lot of people drain up a lot of money very quickly, thinking that they're talking to someone else. So. The last thing. Lions. We'll, we'll see what happens this week. I think the commanders shouldn't be a big deal. But if you see our officers out and about, they will be wearing one of these two hats. This was authorized by me, so don't think that they're just randomly, you know, throwing on lions here.
Logo of the city.
We, we haven't changed the logo. We haven't adopted that as the official seal of Pleasant Ridge yet. But they will be wearing the Lions hats until they win the Super Bowl. I told the officers they can wear it until the Friday after the Super Bowl. So other than that, I'm here for any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Well, in that vein, there's going to be a party after they win, so. On Woodward.
I think there's going to be parties everywhere.
What is the requirement for clearing sidewalks?
Uh, I can't remember the hours. Is that within 24?
By code, it's 12, within 12 hours of the cessation of the snow event, but we enforce 48 hours.
And like if it's a half inch, do you need to clear? What's, what is the, is there a snow amount that you have to clear?
There's not a specific amount, but it's, it just needs to be cleared.
Make sure it's not slippery.
Exactly, exactly. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
I have one additional thing. And I'm going to put Shawnee on the spot here.
Oh.
But we, we're in the presence of an award-winning employee. Shawnee, I'd like to congratulate Shawnee on being selected as one of the M-Parks, the Michigan Parks and Recreation Association, one of the statewide award recipients for 2025. Shawnee was one of the two recreation professionals that got Recreation Leadership Award for this year. So that's a, that's a big deal. So Shawnee, I just want to say congratulations on that. Everything you do for the community.
Yes.
And, you know, I don't know where we go from here, but.
Well, thank you. I always thank you for everybody's continued support of our department, too.
Yes, and I know Shawnee's really looking forward to giving her speech. So if you find yourself on March 5th at, where is it?
In Traverse City.
Traverse City.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Greg already told me, don't go too long.
Want it out, leave it out.
No. Thank you.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, I think we'll move on to the consent agenda. May we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Any comments? Could we have a vote?
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Okay, I think we'll move on to the topic of 36 Ridge lot split.
How's it going, everybody? Hello there. My, my name's Christopher Neal of 36 Ridge, or at least in some ways, 36 Ridge. And so my, my wife and I would really like to thank the, you know, the City Council, Mr. Mayor, for having us today. You know, it's, it's not always easy, you know, putting together the information specifically, you know, that Jim and other members of the city have put together to allow us to make these presentations. I want to thank them as well. And so basically, over the last two months, since we first met in November, you know, we've taken some feedback. We've kind of thought about things, you know, kind of really, kind of reflected on some of the changes we could make in order to, you know, essentially set up something that, you know, everyone involved could be proud of and could be happy with. And I think, you know, originally, we had set up a presentation where we were looking for about three different lots, and we were looking to make three different houses. And after, you know, kind of assessing the feedback and, you know, doing a little bit more of our design process and things like that, we've, you know, come to the conclusion that even though it's, you know, somewhat hefty financial difference, it probably is better served as a two-lot split. And it's something that, you know, we can see, you know, as we, you know, work through building our house on 34 Ridge, you know, we'll be very, very happy to, you know, essentially work within that footprint to make a house everyone can be, you know, as they look at it and say, I was, I'm pretty happy that was made one of these days. May not be immediate, right? But by the time everything's set in, landscaping's done, and it's been there for a little while, I think people look at it and go, oh, it was pretty good. And so, so I think, you know, with the two, that, you know, has been kind of a, I think, somewhat of a sticking point for, for members of the community. I understand why. I mean, it makes sense. At the same time, if you go, I think we've, we've done a couple of different things with our overall, I guess, planning. Oh, there we go. Okay. And a lot of it functionally remains the same. And so this is the current setup, right, of 36 Ridge along with 1A Norwich. And so our suggested split going forward is a two that splits essentially down ridge with 100 feet in the corner, 80 feet, you know, being the 36 Ridge plot, going all the way back to about 315 feet or so back. And so this, this kind of shows that, I mean, originally, we'd showed up with a lot of suggested floor plans that frankly, were not set in stone by any means. We're not, we're not even really done with the actual design process at this point. And so putting an actual footprint, you know, of a 6,000-square-foot house or something like that is by no means what we were looking to do. And so, you know, it'll be much smaller than that. It'll be much more kind of tailored to the area it's in. So we decided that, you know, probably taking off the suggested floor plan. Because really, we just don't have anything we can actually show at this point. But we do know at least some things. And we know that, you know, trees are, you know, part of the big appeal of the land that's there, especially the ones that are right off ridge. And we, we have no real, you know, design on removing any of them. A couple of them maybe need to just be trimmed. And I think there's one that's dead. But, you know, other than that, there's really not too much in the way of change in the front half of the lot. Even in the back, given the fact that, you know, that will, you know, become part of our backyard, we'd like to incorporate, you know, some of the older growth trees that are already there. You know, we may change around some things. And frankly, I'm probably going to plant more trees. And that's really our goal, I think, with, with some of, especially the, the back part of it. It'd be nice to, you know, kind of consider in our landscaping how we can best, you know, utilize that space to add more greenery. So in this diagram, you can see that the existing trees are in bold, but the dotted line ones are functionally, you know, things that are likely to be removed. You know, in our process through, you know, building 34 Ridge, really only the top part would be the ones that actually be removed. We wouldn't be preemptively removing trees for, you know, whomever ends up developing 36 Ridge. And so that'll happen kind of at its own time. But, but yeah, I mean, largely, there's, there's a couple, you know, in there that, you know, I'm, I'm even sad to see go because they're, they're pretty trees. But I think, I think largely, a lot of them, you know, will kind of stay as they are. And that's, that's really the goal, as we continue to cultivate it. And so I think. Finalized design and all that stuff. So that's where we sit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. So, yeah, I'm hoping for any questions, you know, if there's anything.
Jim, did you have anything to add, or?
No, most of my report remains the same on this. In fact, now that it's going from two existing lots to two existing lots, there's not much to say other than it meets the criteria of the ordinance. The only one is, is the division in the public interest. That's for the commission to decide. And any approval will be contingent upon the existing structure of 36 Ridge being demolished and the site kind of cleared because we can't create a lot that, by sects of house. So, and then any other conditions that the commission would deem fit to make sure that this is in the public interest. We just received the updated official survey yesterday. So that's, Greg Neid has that. He's reviewing it. If approved, we'll just, if there's any issues with the survey, with the legal description or any of that, the proposal is, you can approve it. And then Greg will make sure that the official legal documents match what's been presented to you in the packet and tonight. So that's all I have to add on this. I can answer any questions if you have any for me.
Okay. Were there any questions from Commissioner Schmier?
Sorry. So much to say always. Number one, I really, really appreciate you taking not only what I said, but more importantly, what the community said to heart. I mean, the, you know, the involvement of the police and fire and also the salvage is really wonderful. So I really appreciate that. And also, the split into two lots, I think, does address a lot of the concern. So all of that is great.
Thank you.
I do have just two things, going back to what Jim said about potential, I'm probably going to use the wrong word, but like overlays or contingencies, what's the right word here? For kind of future. You didn't give us plans, footprints, which I totally understand and actually appreciate because before, it felt like we were looking at things that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Are kind of leading us in the wrong.
Yeah, like hopeful, but, I mean. But what we're not seeing here right now is the houses or the garages and driveways. So I want to speak specifically to the driveways. When we're talking 36, which is going to be the lot that you're going to sell, you know, and I talked to a few people on the commission today, too, but you had created a potential curb cut onto Ridge. But it does say here, proposed, and obviously, that maybe is contingent on the final plan. I would like to kind of put that in writing and firm that up for me, because I think that is the best place for the driveway for 36 Ridge coming out. I think any other place, and I guess this is for the other commissioners to add to or argue with me or disagree, but I think, in my opinion, that is the best place. So maybe putting that into, into kind of the contingencies of the sale of requiring it to go in that spot, because I'm not sure where else it would go.
Right, unless it came off Norwich.
Unless it came off, I guess, Norwich, but...
That'd be 34.
Yeah, I'm talking 36, but...
So Jim, is it like an order of operations thing? Like, do you know why it's potential versus that that's where the driveway's going?
Because there's no, there's no...
Yeah, the curb cut isn't really part of the land division. But it could be, but that location could be made a condition of approval.
Yeah.
That when built, it is in that location, if you want to put that on there. And again, that's a public interest, because it, it would keep it out of the intersection of Oakland Park and Ridge. It would minimize the loss of the open green feeling in the front yard that we have now by tucking the driveway to one side of the lot. There's some reasons why you could do that.
And I truly think, actually, that whoever designs and plans a home there, that is somewhat of the logical place for the driveway to go anyway, so it doesn't feel like a huge... You know, I, I don't imagine it affecting your ability to sell in the future, but I think in terms of, yeah, the flow of traffic and to what Jim said, the greenery, having it be a condition there. In terms of 34 Ridge, in terms of your property, that driveway, if it, if the intention is for it to come off of Norwich...
Which it is, I would say it's fairly likely that that's, that's the location that we would choose.
Okay. And if that's the case, I do also want to make sure that there was enough space on that driveway that you could pull cars into the driveway. Oh, actually, I have three points. Sorry, we could pull cars into the driveway?
Yeah.
And not directly into the garage. We have other locations in the city where that, that space between the sidewalk and the garage door isn't wide enough for a car to pull in, which then makes people want to park perpendicularly.
Or you end up halfway over the sidewalk, all that kind of stuff.
Right, all of the things.
Absolutely understand, I, I can actually answer that very quickly. Because of the power line situation, actually, we do have to stay a certain distance off the power line, which I believe is either 15 or 18 feet. And we plan on being a little bit, you know, 18 to 20 or something like that. But from that design, functionally, we're almost forced to do exactly what we're talking about, which is it's having that extra space. And I think for usability and just function, that's a big, you know, appeal point of the, of the lot, is the fact that we do have the access to make a more, you know, just an easier drive for those who are, you know, parking at the, at the lot. And so, yeah, that, that's definitely a, a part of our design.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have an exact thing set in stone, but I would say that that's very much involved.
Okay, so on my side, I'd like to, and I, yeah, I'm glad that you have that in your plan, but to also kind of, I hate to use the word mandate it, but to put that in, a contingency, thank you.
Like the 22 to 24 feet?
Yeah, 22 to 24 feet, whatever, I, I don't know what that size looks like, maybe car people?
So, like Chris was saying, our proposed garage is along Norwich, facing Norwich. Currently, from the front of the garage to the sidewalk is about 24 feet. So it should be enough to pull in even a large vehicle like a SUV, like a Tahoe or Silverado or something like that. So, we are keeping that in mind for sure, and we should be able to easily make that work.
Okay, awesome.
Yep.
And then, the last point that I had spoken to a few people about earlier today was also going back to 36 Ridge, which is a contingency for the garage on that property. Which is to say that I know in some of the information, the thought is that it's potentially going to be detached. But again, you're selling the property, and we don't know if the new people are going to want it detached. So the thought being that if it does happen to be an attached garage, if the people in the future decide they want an attached garage, making sure that attached garage is not flush to the front of the house. So making sure that there is a setback between the attached garage and the front of the property. Meaning that when you're seeing the house, you are seeing the house and not just these garage doors are not so prominently, so they are a little bit...
Not a garage-forward house, I, I understand.
Having the house more forward of the garage, it still allows for an attached, it still allows for an attachment, but it does, again, make, brings the house forward.
I think eventually, the, whomever builds on the lot is, is likely going to want some level of attachment, given the width, I mean, it's possible. At the same time, it's not always a requirement, right, depends on what other parameters are looking to fit within 80 feet. I think putting, the one thing I want to avoid, if I can, is, is avoiding language that, because not everybody builds a house, right? Not everyone comes into the process and knows all the parameters of what it takes to build a house. And it's, it's kind of a, it can be overwhelming at first, especially if you don't really know what you're getting into. And I think having a lot of, I guess, specific stipulations. People who would be buying that house may not know exactly what that means, right? And so, that's not an easy thing for someone to see.
You don't want to scare people off with a huge list of...
I don't want people to look at it and think, "Well, I have to buy this lot, and it comes with five different stipulations." And it's not necessarily that the stipulations are wrong or even improper, and not, you know, in accordance with the community. It's just it may create issues where people look at it and go, "Huh, I don't know."
I know, I definitely, so...
But I would say these stipulations are very much in the character of the community.
Right.
Because that, you know, if you looked at, at all of the older, the houses that were originally built here in the 20s and early 30s, it's like you see the garages are 10 to 15 feet at least behind the house. And so, something like that, like, helps keep it in the character of the city.
Oh, I completely agree. I, I think, you know, the architectural standards, for instance, you know, I think there's, there's limitations on even how much frontal garage, this frontage of garage space you can have.
I spend more time arguing with people about garages than...
I'm sure.
It's addressed in the design standards, right?
I think, I think some of these things are.
Why would this be, why would this fit outside of...
Because...
In zoning, in zoning, you can have an attached garage. And the attached garage can be 30% of the total width of the house. So functionally, what that means is that a two-car garage requires about an 80, 75, 80-foot wide lot to functionally have an attached garage. There are no, other than the garage can't extend beyond the front building wall of the house, there's no other real design guidance. So, I think what I'm hearing is some consideration of pushing that garage door back behind the front wall of the house to make it less...
The design standard is it has to at least be...
Right, so right now, right now, the garage... So the garage door can be as proud as the rest of the house, which is a different character. So I, that's, I think what I'm hearing.
So I'm imagining...
So, yes, staggered, thank you.
But because this is also such a prominent placement in the community and everything, I think that's why it has a special contingency, I think, to it, because, you know, a, a front-facing, like a very forward-facing garage, as we're seeing some things that are eking through the design standards. It's like, it would be, I would really appreciate it if that was sort of pushed back, you know, if we had an extra sort of clause.
An example would be actually the houses across the street from this building, and their garages are just a bit offset from the front face of the house. And it does make a difference on...
The, like, the, like, the brick that was kind of lime-washed recently, and kind of gets back, yeah, and I, I mean, that's a very state, it looks great.
Which doesn't say they couldn't attach, you know, they couldn't do something that attaches, like...
Yeah, no, I would say, I, I think that, you know, is, it, it looks very good. I, I just, I worry from a resale perspective, just adding, obviously, extra stipulations suddenly makes people start to really look at it and go, because, because, you know, I don't know. Obviously, it's, it's a big undertaking to start building a house.
People have dreams that they want to build, and...
Yeah, and obviously, I think, you know, the, the overall architectural standards of the, of the city are, you know, a lot higher than what you find in other cities, right? And so I think those, those rules obviously bring people in with an expectation, they're building a certain type of house anyway, right? I don't think very, very many people show up and they say, "I'm going to build a big cement box and just have a garage underneath." And so...
Disagree.
I'm sure you, I'm sure you run into people that have done that. But, yeah, I mean, I would, I would say the, you know, the driveway situation, you know, I can understand, because it, it makes sense. Having it enter in directly into, you know, a regular intersection right in the middle doesn't quite make sense. And I think it does make the most sense to be coming along that stretch. And so, like, those types of stipulations, I'm, I'm more open to. I think the garage side of it, I just, I can't speak for the other person, so I have to kind of think about it.
Katie, if you could, just so that people know what you're referring to on that, could you just sort of point on the picture and...
In terms of the driveway?
Yeah.
So the driveway right now, I mean, in the plans, if you go back, suggests a future curb cut right here, and...
Oh, sorry, I'll go back.
Yeah, so, I mean, so it suggests...
Yeah, it's right over there.
Yeah, a curb cut right there. So if you go back to the picture, it's right on that side. So just making sure that the driveway is coming along this side. Because a driveway anywhere else, obviously, will throw it right in the intersection of Oakland Park. And I think, again, it makes, there's already, the neighboring property has a driveway here, so I think having it kind of flow makes sense.
So just taking out the language proposed and final location to be determined.
Right.
Say curb cut.
Curb cut, right.
Yes, and then on the property in Norwich.
Oh, and then the property in Norwich, right now, you have a proposed curb cut up there. I know that that is still in flux, but it's just making sure that between the sidewalk and the garage, so assuming the garage is here, that there's enough space in that driveway for someone to be able to pull fully, to pull a car in fully into that space. If it's longer, great, but at minimum, making sure a car can get into that driveway.
Right.
Is that the existing curb cut on Norwich?
The, the one that's further up is the existing one.
The existing curb cut.
Yeah, that's, and so...
And then proposed.
You're almost there, just to the left.
A little to the left.
Oh, there we go, there we go, there we go, I'm fine, Ed.
25 max.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, the existing one would, would eventually, you know, presumably, just be eliminated, and so... But, yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, the, the design language of, you know, ensuring we have, you know, 20 or 22 feet or whatever on the side, I mean, it's, that's, it's what we would be doing anyway. And then, you know, I have no problem with the, the understanding of like the curb cut, how kind of coming in where it is. But I think, you know, other than the garage, I just, I, I have to let people be able to speak to the architect and see what they're going to do. You know, and I think, you know, with, with the current setup, you know, obviously, the, you know, the members of the, the design commission and, you know, looking through the architectural standards can, at that point, I think, present a lot of their ideas of, you know, some tweaking of the plans at that point, which I'm sure happens, right? When you look at, you know, when, when people meet with their architectural plans of what they're looking to build. I'm sure there's a lot of input from the city, and things get changed and tweaked and nipped and all that kind of stuff. So, I just, I, I really do want to avoid creating a large list of stipulations, if I possibly can.
I, yeah, I understand, I, I'll be honest, though, I really feel, because a forward-facing garage at that position is, like, or a, like a very forward-feeling garage, I, is a... I don't know if there's some kind of a compromise or something, but it's like, it is just such an entryway into the city. So, it is, I, I, you know, and the, you know, and the character of, you know, the homes you showed us and everything like that, those really didn't reflect anything that would have that sort of a solution.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's what, I mean, I really love, you know, the examples you gave were, you know, reflective very much of the early, you know, 20th century revival style. And, you know, we're hoping that that's where you, you guys are going with the style of home that you're, that you are designing, as well as, you know, what we would hope to see from whoever does buy 36. And that's why it is a very, it's like, the, that garage thing, I mean, this is the sort of a pain point that, like Jim was saying, he has over and over again, and we see people, like, continually wanting to push that. You know, and that's one thing where, you know, I know everyone thought I was misspeaking with the whole thing of the garage, of the driveway for 36 coming off Norwich, but I know that was one of the solutions we talked about, of doing like an easement back there, just to make it, you know, a better to have.
But that was when there was still the Norwich lot, now it's, yeah.
But, and I know that's not, that's not something that no one wants, my mother had one of those once, that was a lot of fun. But, so that's where I feel very sort of strongly about that garage situation. And I just think, you know, I mean, if you look at the Plains House just to the south of there, it's like you see their garage is pushed way back there. And it's a narrower lot like that, and it still works pretty nicely. And, yeah, so it's like, it, it becomes about the home, the, you know, the glorious home, the significantly pretty.
Were there any other points or comments that people had beyond these three?
No, I just had one question, and although you probably don't know the answer, I just am curious. In terms of listing 36 Ridge as a lot, are you going to do that before or after the demo, do you know yet?
Um...
I was just, honestly, it was more just out of curiosity.
Honestly, it's... Yeah, we have to split it, yeah, yeah. Once I can do that, I can hopefully get the process moving, so...
I suppose it could be listed now.
No, yeah, because, because actually, Cambridge was listed prior to the, was, I believe, was listed prior to this.
You get a parcel number, right.
Okay.
So once we have a parcel number and dimensions and things like that, we can, we can start that process and just explain that.
So sooner rather than later, like, you're...
Believe me, interest is expensive these days.
I mean, I work at mortgages, don't I know?
As soon as, you know, we can turn that around, that'd be wonderful.
In paraphrase, we'd be approving the future split, they would demo the house, then they would come back once the house is demoed to get the official split?
No, you can approve it, it would be approved tonight. It just wouldn't be processed at the county administratively until the demolition was complete.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Were there any comments from residents, please? Sorry, thank you.
George Langko, 32 Oakland Park, three houses away from the property, so I'll be seeing it every day. I was in support of the prior proposal. I like this proposal, too, so the property owners have demonstrated that they're responsive, that they're responsible. So, kudos to you for that. The ensuing discussion about the, the qualifiers and conditions and commitments, I was cringing during that, I tell you, because I don't want to embarrass Chris, but he took a financial hit to flex to the current model. And the more conditions you put on the extra property, the harder it is to sell. And you know full well that whoever buys that property is going to build it to the, to the status of this neighborhood. So, for instance, on the matter of the front-facing garage, if you gave me a day, I could drive through Huntington Woods and Gross Point and find you 50 examples of beautiful homes with a garage that's at the front face, I doubt that the future owner of that property would do that. But the more conditions you put on it, the harder it is on everybody. And we don't do this for existing properties, I don't see why we should push all of these design matters that are outside of our current design standards for this new one. Just my two cents, thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Marie Hayner, Patty, I live at 12 Norwich Road, which is about half a block away from this proposed property, but on the side street. We're very happy that the, the recommendations that we had said, which was to go from two parcels to two parcels instead of from two parcels to three parcels, has been accepted by the owner and, and is working with the community to do that. The one item that I had mentioned before was the issue that this is a side, this is a corner lot, and all of the houses that are existing on the south side of Norwich Road do face and have front yards. And we don't require in our zoning ordinance the fact that corner lots have to comply with the front yard setbacks of the adjacent property, which is common in many suburbs, or has a special criteria in, in many suburbs that allows for a deeper side yard setback that addresses it. So it looks like now with the proposal that they're mentioning, that they'll be coming to 25 feet for the face of the garage. Again, and we've had this discussion about not wanting a, a inline garage with the property at 36 or this, we also would like to make sure that we have that same criteria applied to Norwich Road, so that we don't end up with pig-schnout garages protruding past the face of the house. And that's the thing that you see when you drive first into our street, is a garage that isn't, that is projecting out from the face of the house. So the, the criteria that the garage be in line with the house at least minimally, the 25 feet is, isn't quite what would be the 30-foot minimum if we didn't have an established property front yard line. And again, our ordinance doesn't require that, but the consideration of making sure that the house sets back as far as it can to address the fact that we have a very, very narrow opening onto Norwich Road, it's the narrowest of the ones in the city. As we come off a ridge, the drive is very... As we come off a ridge, the drive is very narrow, and then it opens up as you clear this, these, past these, these properties that face ridge. So if we could make sure that we don't have, we don't have a projecting garage and that we try to maintain as much of the depth that we can away from Ridge Road and not allow it. As we do with existing houses, it's only eight feet on many cases, but that, that's an existing house and this is new property. So that would be a criteria that we would be pleased if the city would address in approving this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Would I be able to speak on that?
Sure.
The, the issue, and I completely understand the viewpoint as you look down Norwich with the, with the garage as it stands, that would be completely out of character with every other house that goes along Ridge. So when you look at every house that, or every street that essentially then joins Ridge coming from the west, coming to the east side of Ridge, every other house is essentially protruded into that viewing line of the front yards of the houses on, you know, essentially either Norwich, you know, you know, just these various streets. So I think, you know, especially if you look, you know, at any of the other examples, that is a very different stipulation. And the fact that we're already coming several feet off, we're not coming five feet off the road.
Right.
Coming twenty-five feet off the road, twenty-two, whatever the number is, I mean, but there's, you know, coming twenty feet off the road or something like that is not essentially coming to this point. And it's not a vinyl-sided garage. It's not, you know, a little, you know, the cheapest thing you can possibly park your car in. You know, in examples here, it's, the architectural language and the materials used for that type of building will be very much in line with everything else, right? Because, you know, with, with this type of build, you know, we're not looking to cut too many corners and certainly not something that would be so prominent. And so in that circumstance, I, you know, I think we've, there's, there's been a lot of cessation. And so I just, I think, you know, that, that stipulation would not only impinge, you know, the reasoning as to why I would want to build something on this specific lot, but be difficult for anyone else, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There, you, you have the issue with DTE and the easement because there's the power of service there, right? So they're going to require fifteen-foot?
I believe so.
Okay.
At least the bare minimum.
Yeah. And of course, that most of those other houses that are along the streets intersecting with Ridge actually don't respect that setback. They would, it would be an issue for them if they were built today.
Yes.
You are correct. I'm looking at this forty-two Ridge off of Hanover, forty-eight Ridge off of Cambridge. Actually, forty-eight Ridge off Cambridge is a good analogy. We'll come back to that one. Thirty-two Ridge on the north side of Norwich, twenty-six Ridge on the south side of Elm Park. And those are all within five or eight feet of the intersecting streets, those houses on Ridge. So it's certainly a precedent, it's certainly a design pattern that we have. Forty-eight Ridge is the one that's off Cambridge on Ridge, and that one is, is pretty analogous to this one. The house actually comes out closer to Cambridge than the garage is set back to provide that, that stacking space for the cars between the sidewalk and the street. It's, it's, actually, I was looking at our ordinance, and you're required by ordinance to provide off-street parking spaces on the driveway. So really, there's functionally at least a twenty or twenty-two foot setback requirement anyways to meet that zoning requirement for the garages.
For thirty-four?
For thirty-four, yeah, off the side, off of Norwich. So certainly, like, you know, I could see a, an instance where the house maybe comes fifteen feet off of Norwich, and then the garage tucks back a little bit along that Norwich frontage, certainly to maximize space. But again, I think we're, we might be splitting hairs with this one along thirty-four Ridge. I think it's going to take care of itself with our existing ordinance requirements.
Yeah, requirements.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So really, we're just talking potential contingencies for thirty-six in terms of driveway location?
Driveway location, and another analogy for thirty-six Ridge would be sixteen Ridge, which maybe isn't the best or most favorite design example in the community. Sixteen Ridge is sometimes lovingly referred to, I won't say what's. But it, it's at the end of Poplar Park and Ridge, and it has the attached garage that was added on. That garage is actually set back about twenty feet behind the front wall of the house. There's enough space to park two cars in front of that garage, and those cars actually don't then protrude out beyond the front of the house. So that, and that, that garage is attached, and there's still full depth of the house next to it and behind it, just the way that the lot lays out. Very similar situation to this. So I understand not wanting conditions upon the, the sale of the lot. But again, it's certainly nothing that we haven't, that people haven't dealt with before. Other communities have setback requirements where the garage has to be pushed back ten feet behind the front wall of the house. It's, you know, it's not a, you can do it if you want, you can not do it if you want. It's up to you.
Yes, and then to Marie's point about the pig nose, it sounds like our design standards are already prohibit something like this. It would have to be at least flush with, right?
Only on the front yard, not on the side yard. I'm asking for you to make the, make that a criteria on the side yard.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So the notion being that at a minimum, the house and the garage are at least flush, and that the garage does not protrude forward?
In a side yard situation, I mean, that language gets tough.
Yeah, and, yes, yes.
Since it is a corner, it's like two faces.
Right. Is there something else? Yeah. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Tim Crater. I'm going to be one of your closest neighbors on Norwich. Nice to meet you.
Which address are?
So I think it's relevant to this conversation. I'm at six, which is the one that clearly does not fit the rest of the street the same way. It's a lovely house. We love living there, but as I hear some of the, the trees, the very, very old trees that came down there and the, we have one of the garages that's most flush with the house, you feel it, and you feel the height too. So I appreciate what you've done, switching from three to two lots. I think that's huge. And I'd really consider strongly what you're saying about the trees. I hope you're true to your word on that, because you feel it. And that's something we're, we're trying to get back, and we feel it from our community too, so. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, Chris Osborne, number one Norwich, and everybody. Good to see you as well. We appreciate everybody's working together to kind of make this happen and, and doing what you did by not doing the three lots, like other people have spoken on. I, I guess a thought maybe that I have, and this is just, you know, my idea, is that perhaps a garage could be at the southern end of thirty-six, thus being able to then be further off of the side yard. So I guess would that be at the back of the house versus kind of right in the center of the bulk of the home? Or versus at the north, or I'm sorry, the east end of the house? So with that said, then the, sort of the protruding nose of the garage, a garage could be set back, I think you said, Jim, in other communities, ten feet. At, at the tail end of the house, closest to our home, which would be the next property, it could be pushed in a little bit, giving these folks more driveway space. So I don't know if that's a design, you know, thought or consideration. And I thought I had something else, but for now, yeah, that's it. We're, we're happy with where we're at so far. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts before Commissioner Schmier crafts a, a motion?
Oh, I mean, the pressure.
Which may pass or fail, but.
No, I don't have.
Mayor.
Yes.
Jim, what recourse would we have on thirty-four with the garage?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, excuse me.
Recourse.
So we have the design standards. We're trying to hold the Neils responsible for a lot that we don't, the, the split lot. So other, just the design standards is all we have as is, correct? So they could build, whoever buys that home could build a garage, then flush with the house, with that front wall.
Correct.
There's nothing else.
If, if our, if our, yes, if we stay with our sort of vanilla standards.
Yeah.
Which are pretty high. But, yeah, in a lot of cases, that standard that it can't be more than thirty percent of the width, that, given our lot widths, that makes it impossible to do an attached front-facing garage for most lots in the city. And most people aren't willing to do a one-car garage. So this lot is wide enough to do a front-facing attached garage.
Two-car garage.
Two-car garage, correct. The recourse, if you do a condition, would be that that condition would be recorded with a registered deeds, so that shows up in the title, chain of custody for the, for the lot, when somebody was buying it, so that they'd be aware that there's an extra stipulation there. We'd put it in our building department software, so whenever a house came through, we'd know, okay, there's also this extra condition that was placed upon the property as part of the approval, that the garage has to be, you know, ten feet behind the front wall of the house, just to make it less proud. That would be the process by which that was memorialized and in, in the future followed through on.
And that survives forever?
Until someone makes another decision, I suppose. Yes.
Thank you.
And yeah, the recourse could be the, if somebody wanted to come back to the City Commission, you would be the body that could then remove that condition as the body that made it. But, and it's, that's supported in the code of ordinances by the compatibility or in the public interest for the standards to approve the lot split. And again, that applies because we're partitioning a platted lot.
Yes. Are we ready for a motion? Or would you like to think about it?
Well, I don't want to think about it past this meeting, certainly, but I am a little conflicted on the garage, which is where I am questioning the ultimate motion.
Right. Yeah, if I, if I think about the other homes in Pleasant Ridge, the other homes with attached garage, most of the homes that I think of in Pleasant Ridge with attached garage have an offset, and there are some exceptions. In fact, one of them, I think, is Hanover. It's the ranch. Is it on the corner of Hanover? Or am I on the wrong road?
Robert Campbell's.
Yes, is that Cambridge or Hanover?
Hanover.
That's Hanover, where the garage, I think, opens to the west.
Yeah, faces the rear property line.
Right, so you have a home that's large, long, close to the road, and is flush, all the way down the secondary street.
I think we're talking thirty-six. I'm talking thirty-six.
Yes, but I'm just, I'm working through that one.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, okay.
So I'm, I'm, I'm actually comfortable with the notion that, my personal view is, I'm comfortable with the notion that the house would be, have a flush side on the, on, on Norwich. On the home on thirty-six, I think thirty-six would actually benefit from having the offset, because if I think of all of the other homes in Pleasant Ridge, almost all of the homes with attached garages do have an offset in that, in that style and in that amount of width. So I'm, I'm, I'd be comfortable with that, especially with a two-car garage and it being a rather prominent amount of the width of the home. It might actually look better.
I think actually, Nick, you have one comment about that. So, for example, the city of Birmingham has a similar stipulation to front-facing garages, where the front of the garage has to be five feet behind the front of the house. And it's the furthest setback part of the house. So if you have like a, you know, L-shaped house, it has to go behind that furthest setback part of the house, which is maybe something that you could consider for this one as well. Regarding Chris and Ashley's lot, I think, given that there's no language in the ordinance or the design standards about having a side-facing garage, being flush with the part of the house that's on that side of the, side of the garage, I don't think that's necessarily something that is a requirement of the, the lot split and should not be part of the contingencies, just because there is no language about that. And as Jim mentioned, there are several homes within the city that would violate that design standard already. So, just a thought.
And I think, and I, I think having the, the offset for thirty-six, you know, the house that we're not, you know, immediately responsible for, I think having that offset with the garage, I mean, it's, I imagine anybody who would be building something would be looking to do that, and I, I don't think it would probably stand in the way of their design. You know, I would say that, I mean, that's five to ten feet or something like that makes sense. I'm, I'm okay with that stipulation, because I, I don't think it really changes, after thinking about it a little more, the, the quality of what is being, is able to be built there, right? And so having, having a required attached garage that's, you know, a front-facing.
The garage is not required, but if it is attached.
But yes, yes, so if, if it is in fact attached, yes, then, you know, it's, it's offset by five or ten feet. That's, I don't think that'd be a problem.
The nice thing is, I mean, that's such a deep lot. The garage can be, that's probably, and there are ways to attach. I mean, it's not like there's not space to figure out a solution. And it, it would just be a very unusual situation to have a front-facing garage along Ridge Road like that. And when you've seen it, it's like you notice it, I think was one of the points of the house of.
It literally will be one of the most seen homes at Oakland Park and Ridge. So it just makes sense to be happy with what might go there.
Sure, and I'm, I'm okay with that language, you know, an offset of, of sorts for the garage, you know, for thirty-six Ridge. If, if we need to write that a deed, that's, that's okay with me.
Okay.
Okay.
And architects are very clever. They know how to solve these things.
Okay, I'm gonna, oh, two F.
I was, I was just gonna kind of summarize my thoughts. I've been waiting here. The, just taking this all in, did you want to go ahead?
Uh, no, please, I can, it can wait a minute.
Okay. I, I just keep thinking like, what's fair and balanced? And the Neils have come forward with a really generous proposal and made a sizable concession going from three to two lots.
Yes, thank you.
They've made a concerted effort to accommodate many of the concerns from residents, neighbors, including but not limited to the lots going from three to two, making an effort to keep certain trees, adding greenery, donating materials from the existing home, aligning with the community aesthetically to the best of their ability. And it seems to me, I'm confident most will be pleased with this, and especially considering the state of thirty-six Ridge today. Is that the, right? So, yeah, I, I appreciate you going further and even offering the, the ten feet and considering that. But yeah, I appreciate that you guys have really, it shows your dedication to want to be part of this community and really truly listen to your neighbors, and that, that's much appreciated, and I think you've gone above and beyond.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. She is crafting.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, yes, please.
Chris, what, what Chris said was, is very poignant, because I think we all sort of feel that way. My, my question is, when, when plans are submitted, will that be open to public review and public comment at some point or at another meeting, or it's sort of, as long as it fits within codes and the concessions that we're all speaking of, then it's good to go and we'll seal through?
There's an administrative review process with our design standards. We have style-neutral design standards. So it's not a matter of taste or opinion. It's just, there's minimum building quality thresholds. So those are public record. You can review them. There's no public comment process. There's no approval by a board for house plans.
Okay.
So.
The only time that that might occur is if they ask for something that was contrary to anything that we've written.
Outside of, correct, yeah.
And ask for a variance.
Right.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I can, I can try this. Mayor, I move that the application to combine the existing one-A Norwich and thirty-six Ridge parcels and subsequently split the existing thirty-six Ridge to create two new parcels be approved subject to the following conditions. The split will not be processed until the existing structure at thirty-six Ridge is demolished. Submittal of an updated signed and sealed survey matching the current proposed layout on sheet SD point zero zero one of the Krieger CLAT plan set dated twelve nineteen twenty-four, including city attorney review and approval of the surveys and legal description. I think I read that badly. Additional conditions for the future thirty-six Ridge to include, if a garage is attached to the home, it will be offset at least ten feet behind the front-facing wall of the home. And the driveway will be, the driveway to be on the far south side of the property. And the curb cut, and the permanent curb cut will be the curb cut currently listed on the plan.
Proposed.
The proposed.
And south of the crosswalk.
And south of the crosswalk. Did, I know that got jumbled. Do I need to re-say that last line?
You could just reference, you could say the curb cut shall be as located on the Krieger CLAT plan set dated twelve nineteen twenty-four.
Do I need to re-say it? The curb cut, I, whole thing.
What was that, Katie? I didn't quite get it.
Yes. The final curb cut to be, to match the proposed curb cut on the Krieger CLAT plan dated twelve nineteen twenty-four. Yes. Um, the final curb cut to be, um, to match the proposed curb cut on the Krieger CLAT plan dated twelve nineteen twenty-four.
Does someone second that?
Second.
Any other conversation? Any other? Yes, thanks again for all that you have brought to the community in terms of conversation about the property. We know that what you're going to build is going to be great, so. However this lands, we appreciate.
We appreciate the movement that you've had on this.
Yes, all right. May we have a vote?
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Congratulations. All right.
Thanks for having me.
All right.
Time to get to work.
Yeah, seriously.
All right. All right, we're gonna finish the meeting now.
Oh, and congratulations on twenty-six Cambridge, too.
Yes, congratulations on, exactly. City manager's report. How are you gonna top that?
I don't think I am. You have any questions for me?
None.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for?
Sure.
Tell us about six ninety-six, Jim.
Well, my prediction, pain.
Pain.
Two years of not being able to go eastbound from
Loser.
Loser, yeah, to I seventy-five.
So working in Farmington Hills is super fun.
Yeah, that's pretty great. So yeah, I don't know. We'll all find our workarounds and our routes and we'll see what happens.
Email's pretty good.
Yeah, we have a meeting with MDOT on, is that tomorrow? No, Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, so I'm sure it'll be a topic for all the communities along Woodward because, um, their suggested alternative route runs, I think, um, Lodge to Davison to I seventy-five. But I imagine a lot of folks aren't going to make it to I seventy-five. So, uh, we'll probably see some increased traffic on all of the northbound routes, um, as people try to work their way back north from wherever. So we'll, we'll see how all that goes.
It will be interesting.
It will be interesting. Yes.
Ten years of I seventy-five wasn't enough.
It was not. All right. Um, any other business?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
So the Women's Club is having, um, one of their, uh, big fundraising activities are trivia nights. And so we have one coming up on January twenty-fourth. It's twenty dollars a person. It's a seven PM, seven-thirty trivia kicks off. It is a great fundraiser for scholarships and they are for kids who, um, live within the Ferndale School District. It doesn't matter what school they go to. And we try, we work really hard to raise a lot of money to give a lot of scholarships to as many kids as possible. And, um, it's a really fun evening, too. It's one of those, it's just up at the community center. It's a perfect Friday night. So don't hesitate to reach out to me. We even have some tables that just need an extra person or two. So please come join us. And then, um, yeah, I, I just want to reiterate what you talked about and Ja- uh, Jackie Hart spoke about, about the GoFundMe for the, uh, Giggle Pickles. Um, the robotics team deserves all of our support, so it's pretty exciting.
That's a really cool accomplishment.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
So.
And then what night was the super fun spring sol- springtime, first spring day?
Super fun art party.
Is it March twenty-first?
It is March, uh, twenty-first.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Tentatively.
Tentatively.
Got a long way to go and a short time to get there.
That's what Chris Wallens is for. Chris Wallens, who will be our chair for that party, will be updating us all soon.
Are you gonna email Chris a line? No?
Yeah. I'll call him tomorrow.
By the way, all right, I think we're ready to adjourn.
I move we adjourn?
Any, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.